Okay, the time is now 6:30. Welcome everyone to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for the Town of Nottingham for November 6th, 2023. I'd like to call this to order by starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, just a couple little things to get out of the way. There will be a concert at the Nottingham Community Church, which is at 106 Church Street that supports the food pantry, so please come out and support the food pantry.
What is that, Ben?
Time? Time is at November 12th from 3:00 to 5:00.
That's a Sunday.
That's a Sunday, thank you, Ben.
You're welcome, Steve. On a more serious note, I'm not sure if anybody heard, I guess there's a structure fire that happened on a Mitchell Road this evening. So, I'm not going to name what the residence is, but our thoughts and prayers are with them. Okay, so, has everybody had an opportunity to look at the manifest payroll? And if there are any questions? If there's any questions or comments, who would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the manifest of 10/30/23 and payroll of 10/31.
I'll second.
2023.
Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by John Moran, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Sherwin.
Okay, minutes, 10:11, 10:16, 10:27, and 10:30. I will abstain from 10 and 11 because I was not here.
Do we want to do them one at a time, or all of the...
Was all of us here on the remaining three?
I was not here on the 20th.
Alright, so we'll do them separately.
Yeah.
Alright, who's had an opportunity to look at the 11th?
I have.
I have. Are we all good with the corrections and...
Yep.
Okay, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 10/11/2023.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Matt Sherlin, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Sherwin.
And, aye, Ben Barlett abstain. Minutes for 10:16.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 16th, 2023, as amended from Kelly, Kelly's amendments.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Sherwin.
10:27?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from 10:27/2023.
I'll second.
Okay, Matt, Tim DeBrio made a motion, Matt Sherlin seconded, roll call.
Steve Welch abstain.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Sherwin.
I'm just trying to keep it so it's simple for the who's recording the minutes that knows, instead of jumping around for who's approving and who's not.
10:30?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from 10:30/2023, as amended by Kelly.
Second.
Motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Sherwin.
Okay, everybody had an opportunity to look over the non-public minutes? Any questions, comments? If not, someone would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the non-public minutes from October 16th and October 27th, 2023.
Aye, Steve Welch, on the 16th, I'll abstain from the 27th.
Aye, John Moran, both.
Aye, Ben Barlett, both.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Sherwin for both.
Okay.
Second that one.
Who seconded that?
I made the motion.
Nobody ended up seconding, he kind of went in, so I will second.
Okay, so the motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Matt Sherlin.
Sorry, I was like, I think we...
Thanks, Steve. Alright, reports from assigned boards and committees, budget?
So, Budget Committee met last Thursday, really didn't get a whole lot accomplished, we were just supposedly going to overview the town portion of it, really wasn't able to do anything at that point. Meet again this Thursday.
Okay. Planning Board?
Last Planning Board meeting was canceled, there really wasn't anything on the agenda, and we were having a problem with lack of quorum.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, it doesn't happen very often, but people were on vacation, people were doing things, it just happened to be. There is a meeting coming up for this Wednesday, which is discussing a subdivision lot, one from six acres to four acres for the two-acre lot they're cutting off on 156, and the other one will be, I'm sorry, I forgot about the top, it's on the minutes, you'll see, but it shouldn't be a fairly light meeting for us. Hopefully we get to talk about budgets and some other things that we need to talk about.
When are they meeting next?
We're meeting this Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. And CIP?
Scheduled to meet a week from tomorrow.
Excellent. Anything on Marston?
No, Doug, it's almost done.
Excellent. Town Ministry report?
Okay, first thing I'm going to request is, at your last meeting on October 16th, you reviewed a non-public session, the minutes in the non-public session held February 27th. I'm requesting a motion to unseal those minutes.
I make the motion to unseal the minutes from February 20, the non-public minutes from the February 27th, 2023 meeting.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Sherwin.
Brian Allen obtained a quote from Fisher Plows of Lee to install a sander in the utility pickup truck, we have a plow on it, John's already saying no. The price is $6,326, it will enable the truck to be used both for plowing and sanding, and we can also utilize a plow contractor that doesn't have a CDL if we needed to. Obviously, this would be helpful for the parking lot and intersection cleanups, there may be some additional fabrication just for the sander to be able to fit properly between the toolboxes, but this is something that I am proposing to you as an option, and if you did approve the purchase of the sander and any necessary fabrications, I would just request that you would expend the money from the same New Hampshire DOT highway funds that we received for road maintenance that we used to purchase the truck.
And...
It's a current balance of $46,277, and I would be looking for authorization up to $7,000 to cover the additional fabrication.
Who's going to do the fabrication?
I don't know if it would be something that Brian will be doing with his mechanical ability, or if it's something that we'd have to have.
I would feel better if it was done...
At Fisher?
Hmm?
At Fisher?
Yes.
So, when this truck was got and approved at our deliberation series for the meeting, it was told by the then-director for the Highway Department that this truck was not to be used with a sander in the back.
He did say that.
Due to the wear and tear, we were saying that this truck was supposed to be utilty to carry chainsaws, to carry equipment to job sites, and a plow was okay, but it was not to have the sander, since the sander is going to wreck the body of that truck for longevity, that was a purpose of reason why we were not, and were told, and people voted for. So, now again, things change, it's up to you guys, you know, here, but again, the original thing with this was here, was that we were not putting a sander in it.
We also learned that that wasn't a properly fitted truck yet, after the fact, so...
That too, so I will not support us buying a sander for this truck, and that's how I feel about it.
Are they requesting a sander for this truck, or is it just...
Yes.
Can they use the one that's at the recycling center? Why?
No, because this is a utility body truck, so I mean, it has to fit between the snowplow, it's...
Not designed.
It's a different design.
No, I mean, can they use the, doesn't the one that's at the recycling, the old one?
Oh, you're talking about using that for plowing?
Right.
I don't know how long it's going to last, I mean, it got...
This is a truck that's had its frame welded four times already, so I'm not sure how much useful it's going to be used as a sander truck.
It's been retired to the recycling center for it to get whatever is left of remaining life out of it.
Because they'll be using it there to plow.
Yeah, it won't get used nearly as much.
Do we know who requested, was this Brian was thinking of it, was this from the new...
This was something that was kind of in works from the interim Public Works Director, it was a conversation that he and Brian had had about the usefulness of the truck, I mean, the question has been raised as to why we even have one, why we purchased one, whether it was necessary, so this is to make sure that it gets used.
I mean, I'm sure it would be getting used anyway, but I do agree with John that a steel bed put installed down would greatly reduce the life of that truck. Do any of our people not have a CDL right now?
No.
So, if I could just add to that, will you also...
I was going to make my last statement.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
If nobody doesn't have a CDL right now, we have the rest of the trucks, I would, that seems something that maybe the new foreman can just kind of drive around, clean up some stuff as he sees, but if we need to like lay down some salt, use one of the other trucks right now and just see how the year goes, and then if we're in a need, starting at the beginning of the year, and we're like, we've found ourselves in a need for it, then I would say come out and put the F-550 small enough that it should fit everywhere, and that has a standard.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't see the justification for destroying the truck yet.
So, if I might add to that, the Polycaster sanders are considerably lighter compared to the stainless steel sanders that they put in the back of these trucks. However, the suspension on this particular vehicle, I question whether it can actually withhold any weight for any length of time, could break springs and so on, which we've seen in the One Ton already. I've always been an advocate of, if we're going to get a truck, it should always be in the 550 series, so it can handle the weight, the abuse that it takes, and so on, it's just a much dirtier frame and suspension system, so I will not support adding a sander to this vehicle.
Well, you got three there, does one add in? I think we've heard enough.
Yep.
You deliberate, you're good. What was the truck, tell us, what was the truck? It's the new utility truck for the Highway Department, it's F-350?
Yeah, it's a black extended cab that should come and drive around.
Okay, moving on. The Planning Board has an application before them to be heard this Wednesday, something off of what John was saying, the applicant's requesting to change the cistern type from poly as required to concrete, or in lieu of a cistern, add sprinkler systems to each proposed home within reasoning being the substantially higher cost of polyfiberglass cisterns.
Moore's Road subdivision.
Thank you. The Planning Board Chair, Ed Veale, is seeking input from the town, and I'm just reaching out to you to see if you have any input to provide prior to this going for hearing on Wednesday.
You got more than that, like, why, how big is this subdivision?
Well, it's two roads, so, because there's Moore's Road and there's Jamsa Trail, so it's, there's three lots on Jamsa, I think, three, again, it's been a couple months, I've seen a bunch of other ones, but on this, and then there's, the majority is on Moore's. So, one of the things we talked about when those was whether they're going to have sprinkler systems, and then it was, you know, because that's what I was shooting for, make them all sprinklers, save the town on the cistern things, because I think it's a waste of our money, but that's my point. But, it was decided for the cisterns, and again, it's probably a cost factor, I haven't heard from the applicant of the full example, which we'll hear at the meeting, you know, for what they're doing, but the subdivision's been already approved, so this is just a coming back to a formality of part of the subdivision approval of what they're saying, so...
What are our other cisterns right now? Some are ponds, some are...
Yeah, I mean, I've, I don't know, I mean, there's many cisterns in town, I can't tell you if they're all the exact same or not.
I'm sure it's changed throughout the year, and each one's getting kind of bummed. I mean, I'd have to probably see some sort of like financial hardship, why they couldn't meet the standard, and why one over the other, I don't, it would be nice if they were here to tell us, instead of just kind of asking, I don't know if it's a planning board person, but...
It's not the first time that it's come up, Ed had suggested that perhaps we reached out to an engineering firm for an opinion on what they're constructed out of, I mean, obviously, we don't want to be held liable if we allow a concrete cistern and have it...
And knowing, knowing the...
What's the lifespan?
Knowing the Planning Board tomorrow, when this comes in front of us, because it's the first time we're going to hear this, the decision will not be made by the Planning Board on tomorrow night, it most likely will be, let's do our research, let's figure out, and then we'll come back with an answer, the Planning Board will come back with an answer. So, for us to give an exact answer tonight, I don't think is necessary, due to the fact that the Planning Board is not going to give them probably, in my opinion, with my years of experience on that board, that they're not going to give the guy the yes or no without finding more details about it too, because again, this is the first, it's come in front of the Planning Board, so, very unlikely the Planning Board gives a first-time decision on anybody that comes in front, so...
But they knew about the cistern at the inception of...
That was approved for the subdivision, right, they're asking for a whole different thing, so they'll have to consider it, think about it, the Board will have to talk about it, and they'll probably again, ask for an engineer to determine what the difference is, which is better, which is why, or, and find out a reason, so...
Like I said, it'd have to be some sort of like substantial burden to why we would deviate.
Right, we don't want to be stuck with a bill down the road that the concrete one fails, and now we've got to replace it on...
Septic tanks take a long time, though, and those hold water.
So...
So, I mean, I don't think that the concrete could be bad, but if it's saying it's required to be poly, why would we deviate? Sorry.
Are you prepared to give them the...
Oh, I'm going to be at the meeting anyways, I'll tell them, doesn't matter, they'll be happy to, no worries.
Alright, I spoke with Brady Rambo, who's our new contact at New Hampshire DES, we have an application in process for a public water supply at Marston, the application's been submitted, but it was missing required documentation, I'm working on compiling the information needed, including a site plan to include the well location, the average consumption and acreage currently being irrigated, which Tim was able to get for me this weekend, and to set up quarterly testing for bacteria and annual testing for, I said nitrates, but it's not nitrates, I have to find out what the annual testing is, I don't have it written down. Once this documentation's supplied, the application will be processed for transient water supply, which will enable the use of the bubbler and a source of water in an emergency situation, so that process has been, I've picked up the pieces and we're somewhat moving forward. With assistance from Owen Friend Gray, the town has applied for a New Hampshire DOT road safety audit for the intersection of Route 156 Raymond Road and Deerfield and Ledge Farm Roads. There have been seven crashes reported in the past 10 years, with one of those crashes being a fatality involving a motorcycle this summer, so I will be able to update you further on that once we get more information, but the application's at least been submitted at this point. Due to the declining temperatures over the next week, it's been decided that it will be best to hold off on the new playground build until spring, we were originally scheduling it for Saturday, the 18th, but the temperatures forecasted for next week are in the high 40s, and there's a question about whether it will be sufficient for the concrete to set up properly, which is required as a base for the playground structure, so they will be delivering the structure, we'll be storing it, and we're hopeful for early spring to be able to construct our new playground structure.
Okay, here comes the question.
Okay.
Which we talked about last meeting. Where are we going to store, since our storage is very limited, and this is not something that's in a little 12-by-12 box?
Well, the fortunate part is that playground equipment is meant to be outdoors, and since we've got a lot of the brush and debris cleaned from the side of the building, we can actually store it off to the side by the old building, and then the internal parts and pieces, the bolts and the other parts that we don't want to lose, we can find a location for them inside.
Is it possible to go in the old fire station?
Possibly.
Make it a little bit more secure? We'll have to, I mean...
Well, if it's way back there, somebody's going to have to really have some cojones to go all the way back there with a truck to put it on, drive away with it.
So, with that being said, I've provided a memo that Courtney wrote up for all of the wants and needs that we'll need for tools and assistance when the time comes to do the install, there's a list of...
I'm sure with some during the winter programs, in the early spring, Courtney with her outreach, you know, the success she's having with all the, and she's doing stuff like this, could possibly reach out to some residents in town to help that, before we start adding a list of things that she needs us to buy and spend money on.
I think she's hopeful that she can coordinate the build with the community cleanup day, and be able to utilize, you know, some of those resources.
There you go, already figuring it out, perfect.
We're just going to hope for an early spring. Steve Rollins joined us last week as our new Highway Director, he started a week ago Monday, and he's transitioning. Additionally, we have Tyler Hollenrake and Jim Cavali, who've also joined the department in the past few weeks, both have heavy equipment operator experience and greater operator experience, so hopefully we can fill that need more readily.
Good news.
And I think the only other item that didn't get addressed on, no, it did, never mind, alright, so that's all I have for you.
After-action review from last meeting? Ten of items for future meetings?
Other asterisks, you have the investment policy...
Yeah, investment policy, oh yeah, I saw that, yep.
Should be for the next month and a half, just put budget, right, since we'll be talking about it.
You just need us to sign.
Right. For the investment policy?
Yeah, the investment policy.
I made the few changes that we talked about in work session, and then the only other thing that I noticed was, under Section 5, Authorized Financial Institutions, it referenced a Schedule A attached for the approved financial institutions, but there was no Schedule A, I couldn't find evidence of one, checked with Betsy, and I just updated the language to include federally insured banks chartered under the laws of New Hampshire, and those chartered under the laws of federal government that have a branch located within the state of New Hampshire to cover us, there is a website, the treasurer for the state of New Hampshire maintains a list of qualifying financial institutions for reference, you can get that updated list right from their website, so I just put that in there as a reference point, and then of course, we would use the public, the New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool as necessary as well, so, that was the only change that was made, other than adding in the statutory authority for the annual review and re-adoption.
Pretty straightforward. Need a motion or anything, or you just want us to, somebody like to make a motion to approve this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the updates to the investment policy for the Town of Nottingham.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Matt Sherlin, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Sherwin.
Okay, unanimous.
Steve, there's an original copy in the signature file that will need to be signed.
Yeah, when we send that around, we'll sign it.
Image five, there.
Alright, petition and police license agreement.
It's a petition and poll.
Say it again?
Petition and poll, it's for a new utility poll.
Fresh my memory where that is?
Stevens Hill Room?
Where's Stevens Hill?
Where on Stevens Hill? There's been crews out there all week, so has it already been replaced?
Probably.
Okay.
They're asking for an underground.
They still have to put a utility poll in to service the underground into the subdivision.
It's probably in that, it's in the signature. Yeah.
Hmm?
It's in the signature package, because we just have to sign it.
Alright, so is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, they need the poll.
Okay. Facilities manager job description. See, we got one here. Everybody had an opportunity to look it over?
No.
I had no questions on it.
Alright, so you'll be posting this, and resumes and all that will be accepted until Monday the 27th? Is that how I'm reading this?
Yes, and that's subject to change if you want to make it sooner, I just figured that would give it a little bit more exposure, we'd initially talked about the 20th, but you scheduled in an additional meeting for budget review on the 27th, so...
John, what do you think? Sooner or just leave it as is?
Let's leave it as is.
Leave it as is, the rest of the board feel the same?
Yeah, 27th is good.
Okay. Need a motion for this? No, okay.
Assessing, we don't have anything.
General business? The hydraulic sander opening bids. So, the town, we accepted a bid for our 2018, 2019 Fisher Steel Castor, nine-foot, three-yard hydraulic sander, the sander's being sold as-is, where is, no warranty expressed or implied. A bid for the amount of $419 was submitted by Matt Pickens. So, the question is, does the Board want to let it go for that?
Didn't you say it was worth thousands of dollars?
Mm-hmm.
So, this came from the F-550?
That one came from the 550, so, yeah.
And then it was removed due to being...
It didn't even get one, got one season use out of it, they didn't like it because it was a hydraulic, the pump inside was noisy, it was, you can hear it inside the cab and all that stuff, but you're not really supposed to use the hydraulic pump as you're going down the road at 40 miles an hour, but it's just meant for subdivisions, slow roads and all that, but, yeah, we spent like a lot of money on that, six grand, I believe, back then.
As much as I know Matt, and you know, whatever, no, not for $400, is there a second avenue, since we did put it up in the bid and do it, now that can we put it out for our, like, say, hey, Craigslist or Facebook Marketplace or whatever, Town Audi is selling now for $3,500 bucks or something, at a real number?
Yes.
Since this avenue didn't work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll have to think about a reasonable number that we can put on this and make sure we get that by next meeting onto the market, I think.
I believe that's also a Fisher one, if you could reach out to Fisher and maybe get an idea what a used one would be in that condition?
We've got to make a motion to decline.
I make a motion to decline the offer by Matt Pickens for $419.
I second.
For the sander.
Motion made by John Moran, seconded by Tim DeBrio, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Mr. Sherwin.
Unanimous. Alright, it's just about 7 o'clock, so, we're going to go right into the appointed times, the PLIA, please step up, please state your name and address for the, into the mic, please.
I'm Neil Santos, Hill of One Shore Drive, and I've been in charge of the Mill Foil program on Pawtucket Lake for the last, forever, nine years.
And I'm Pam Kelly, 35 Sacks Road, I'm also on the Board of the Pawtucket Lake Improvement Association, I'm here to add weight to Neil's presentation.
So, I'm going to try this, because you all have a copy of the presentation, but I do have a video at the end that I'd like to show, assuming that technology works, I'll probably turn the lights down at the end, but this shows up okay. So, this has been a very eventful of the year, for several reasons, for Pawtucket Lake and Mill Foil issues, and I will get into that.
Bow.
There we go. Oops. Well, there we go. Whoops. Milfoil was first discovered nine years ago, going on to nine years, it's probably brought in by a park visitor back then, and the Horse Island launch in the state park. The milfoil team was started back in 2015, 2016, and milfoil's now in 16 areas in the lake. And this is where we started, Horse Island launches, we're in here, and this is what it looked like as of last year. So you can see it's in a lot of areas, very spread out, as well as in quite a number of coves all around the lake. By the way, all these little coves, they all have association or private bull launches, and these are not monitored by lake hosts, so this could be introducing milfoil in all these private, private launches. Most notably, it's up at the north end of the lake, we've known that for a couple of years now, but there were some reports at the end of last year that there was some right off the town beach, the town beach is right, right here, and we didn't have a chance to really survey it with divers last year, we had a couple anecdotal reports, but I'll talk about that more later. You can see our total milfoil remove up through 2022, and you can see how much it accelerated between 2021 and 2022, and this year, my guess is if we hadn't done what we ended up doing, we would have doubled that this year. The acreage and removal amounts are outgoing every year, and as of last year, it outstripped our volunteer team capabilities, and we had to start paying divers, starting last year during the milfoil. And we had a suspicion, based on some new sightings, particularly up north at the town beach, that it was going to get out of control, so we decided to request a grant from New Hampshire DES in the fall of last year, the grant request had to be in September, so we submitted the request only knowing what I showed you on the 2022 map. So the grant application was approved, and for the first time, you request a invasive species mitigation in New Hampshire, if they have the money, you can get 100% of the cost covered. So based on the amount of acreage on the map you saw, they estimated if they had to treat it all or have a crew come in, it would cost $52,000. So that's the grant amount they allowed us. And up to 54 acres of treatment, and that's all the red area on the map that I showed earlier, out of all the areas identified, what it was subject to review and survey by the DES, so the way it works is they grant the money for the, for the maximum, and then they can always reduce it. If they, if they do a grant for the smaller amount, they can't increase it. So DES had to review the plans. So our plan for this year, at the beginning of this year, was to search all the areas to then, to verify where the milfoil was, and you know, where it was in 2022, if there's any new areas in 2023, followed up by a DES survey to confirm the plans, and it was really their call as to what areas need to be handled or treated or used to grant money for. So the DES recommended using Procelllicor, which is a selective plant growth hormone for treatment in the high density milfoil areas, and the low and medium density areas, they recommended that we continue to do what we're doing, that is hand-cloaked by, by our guide team. And obviously, we would continue to keep searching with our milfoil team to verify all the areas and what for more, more milfoil. So the, the chemical Procelllicor is, has been approved in New Hampshire since 2018, it's been used to treat over 50 water bodies so far in New Hampshire with great results. It's very selective for a few plants, including variable leaf milfoil, has little to no effect on the native vegetation, so little side effects, if you will, and it has a very short-term water usage restrictions, mostly related to watering plants or, or gardens and crops. In terms of water usage, swimming or boating, there really were no restrictions, so it's, it seems to be a very, great product with very few side effects, and it shows good suppression for at least three years, milfoil. In fact, since it's been used in New Hampshire, by approved by New Hampshire in 2019, with all those water bodies treated, only one water body has had to be treated a second time because of, because of water flow, they underestimated the water flow through that area, so the concentrations of Procelllicor weren't high enough, and they had to re-treat it. Other than that, it shows really good suppression for several years. We don't know how long, because it hasn't been, you know, approved for, for that long. And the great thing about, I mean, I don't like to use chemicals either, I was very disappointed as a leader of the team to have to use chemicals or herbicides, but you know, it was really getting under our control. And the problem with, with hand extraction, diving and hand extraction is, we don't see everything, so we can search an area and we typically find probably 60% of what's there, 75%, whatever, we see the big plants, we don't see the small plants, so we miss stuff. And the other thing is, when you get down in the silt and divers pull this stuff out, the silt, you know, piles up, you have zero visibility, and the divers miss stuff. Big plants, they have to go back four or five times to try to get it all out, and they come, we have significant regrowth. So with a systemic treatment like this, every plant in the treatment area is affected, and it goes right down to the roots, and kills them right down to the roots, so you get much better, more thorough coverage. So it was a tough pill to swallow to, to say we really need help and need herbicides, but it really seemed to be a good choice and the only really, the only thing we could really do. Finally, up at the north end of the lake, if you look at the map that I showed you, we had this little square up here by the town beach, well, we dove, the team dove here in June, and the place was totally infested with milfoil, more than we've ever seen anywhere else in the lake. This whole cove is totally infested with milfoil, probably, probably as much milfoil here as we covered all, we extracted all of last year from the rest of the lake. So it's a good thing we asked for that grant, because this would have just, you know, we would have overwhelmed. And this jumped way up north, and I, nobody goes up there, other than bathers, except for, I hate to condemn fishermen, but it's not a hybrid traffic area in terms of boating traffic, but it's heavily used by fishermen. So it's probably likely that it was moved up there somehow by people fishing, and by the way, when we went up there, we found a lot of floating fragments, milfoil spreads by fragmentation, and we found a lot of floating fragments up there, hundreds of them, so this milfoil had gotten, not only was it thick, but it was close to the surface, so props were running through there and just chopping it up. And the other thing here, besides being way up north, is this is where Grand's Dam is, so anything that escapes here is gonna go and get down the Lamford River and, and infect the Lamford River water, the basin of the watershed. Also, this whole area up here, called Fundy, is very shallow, and if milfoil escapes from here, this area here is, is likely to be very infested very quickly, and that's one, one of our hyper items for this coming year is to take a look at this area, see if it escaped from that area, and it has infested this area. So you see a gray and a red area, the red areas were treated with Procelllicor, these gray areas weren't quite as dense, so this area and this area also. So those medium density areas, we diverted some of the money, the grant money, by using herbicides, to having the dash team come in to pull the milfoil, search that area and pull the milfoil out. This is the dash boat that came out of Maine, New England milfoil, they, it cost us, or cost the state, $6,500, $6,500 for three days worth of work, and they searched all those areas I had in gray, and about 30 acres, and removed the milfoil from all of those areas. And then, about a week, two weeks later, it was followed up with the Procelllicor treatment. They do is they bring in an airboat, so there's no prop to chop up the milfoil, they mix this concentrated Procelllicor with lake water at a, at a predetermined rate of dilution, and then they, they inject it into the water, you can see the nozzles here under the water, so they do a subsurface injection of the, of the chemical, so there's nothing, nothing in the air. It sits in the water column, it sinks, and the milfoil absorbs the chemical within six to eight hours, and then it doesn't know it's dead, but it's dead. This is what milfoil looks like, healthy milfoil looks like, this is a bunch of it that was pulled out actually by New England milfoil, and then a week to two weeks afterwards, that's what it looks like. So it just kills the plant, it looks like it had been burned, basically, so very effective. As I mentioned, the DES grant was 52,000 based on the maximum treatment area, the treatment area was reduced, and some funds went to the dash, it cost 6,496 for dash, and the Procelllicor treatment was 37,000. The future grants, you get a one-time shot at 100%, if we ever need to go for grants in the future, the max is 50%. However, it all depends on how much money the state has and how many requests they have for grants. So it could be 20%, it could be up to 50%, but the point is, it won't be 100%, and the, anything that remains from that in terms of what's it costs, would have to be made up with other funds, grants, Articulate Reserve Fund in Nottingham, PLIA, funds and so forth. Potential future costs based on the area we see, could be even more than this, but around $60,000. We're going to get some relief, and I'll, I'll bring that up on the next, next chart based on what we did this year, so I don't anticipate a huge problem for the next few years, but when it comes back and gets like it was in 2022 and in 2023, we could be looking at mitigation costs of around 60K. So it's really important that the town, even though we've not asked you for money for invasive species treatments, we have for local lake hosts, but not invasive species treatments, it's important that our reserve fund stay there so that, you know, in anticipation that something like this could happen in the future. One week after treatment, I showed you the milfoil, we had divers go down and looked in various areas where the milfoil was treated, and it all looked like, I had on that previous slide. We did 10 search dives, we do dive once or twice a week and search for milfoil, since the end of July, in the treated and non-treated areas, couldn't find any milfoil. So between what we did, what the dash team did, what Procelllicor did, we're ahead of the curve right now. At the end of the summer, in September, we did find three small areas of milfoil, they're still there, and we'll, we'll go at them next, the next spring, but the point is, milfoil's not gone, it's not eradicated, it's still there. We've suppressed it, I think we've got to put one where at least for the next year or two or three years, we can manage it. After that, we'll just have to see. And of course, the caveat that, you know, we don't know what we don't know, so there could be other areas, you know, far removed from what we found so far where there's milfoil. We're gonna, we're gonna find it with our weed watchers or, or lake residents. We've got some breathing room based on the activities this year, I do expect to find more milfoil, and we'll continue to search, we're searching, we'll be searching once or twice a week next year as we have been in the past, and lake hosts are gonna be a key here. You know, every time they, they have a save, every time they find something on a trailer or boat, that saves us hundreds, maybe thousands of hours of human time searching, and, you know, potentially tens of thousands of dollars in mitigation costs, so that's, that's really key. And it's not just milfoil, when you look at the map of New Hampshire, and you look at the lakes around us, you know, Massabesic, for example, Beaver Lake and so forth, then not too far away, you find stuff like this, and some of this is even worse than what we have, in terms of controlling it and eradicating it, so there's a lot of other things that, you know, we could get hit with, so we can't get complacent. You know, a particular concern to me, as I mentioned when I showed you that map, is the northern part of the lake is very shallow, and if it's up there in the town beach though, it could very well be in that whole area, that's several hundred acres of very shallow ground, it's very shallow water, and before it gets there, then we've got a real problem on our hands, so, anyway. So that's the outlook. Any questions on what I've said so far?
Just out of curiosity, for the folks at home that are, that are listening to this, you know, you had said 54 acres, you know, that's what you came up with, what needs to be treated, or, or what you've known to have, how many acres is the lake again?
Just shy of 900.
900, so 54 acres versus 900, but how much of that is shallow?
About half, about half.
And that's where?
It's shallow enough for milfoil to grow.
Right, and that, that's where it thrives.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you could have 400 acres of milfoil.
Yeah, I, I had the honor of, you know, going out this past summer with you, and you give me a tour of the lake, it's very educational, and I encourage the rest of the board members to do the same if you have an opportunity.
Glad you were able to take everybody out sometime next spring.
Yeah, it was an eye-opening experience, so I applaud your, your, your effort to, to limit this.
It's a whole big team.
Yeah.
Now I'd like to play for you, if someone could get that white light switch, it doesn't show very well, we're here without some light, just like, just the white one will give us some light, no, over the right, right there. Yeah, that's the one. This was taken by a diver on the surface, so you can get a feeling for how close to the surface this milfoil is, that's milfoil, and you'll see more coming up.
Yeah.
That's milfoil. All this is milfoil. He just did a straight dive on the surface, not a dive, but snorkeling on the surface and took these videos. This is what the town beach cove looked like this spring, and this was just, you know, a few feet, but, you know, it was like this, that whole cove, that whole 15, 20 acres, looked like this. The video's about one minute long. That's all very healthy milfoil, you can see a lot of it is really close to the surface, within a foot of the surface or so.
Just my strokes.
Yeah, and not so much fun.
And you can't treat it in the fall?
You can't treat it whenever it's actively growing, it grows right through the winter, but obviously not as much as it does in the summer time.
Mm-hmm.
As long as it has sunlight, even through the ice, if there's no snow. They tell me if you have clear ice, you can see it under the ice growing, not, you know, really growing. It grows an inch or two a day, by the way, and we, we know that, we cleared one out of a small cove, we went back two weeks later, it was a foot and a half tall. It grows fast, it's got a lot of nutrients, that's another reason we like to get the nutrients out of the lake. Any other questions?
No, thank you for that presentation.
Will you be doing this presentation during deliberation? When we start going over Warren articles, which?
I certainly would be happy to.
Well, just think about that.
It would support, it would help support your cause for the $10,000.
It's, it's the invasive species fund, I think, that, that you were referring to, right? Bingo, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder, John.
Thanks for your time.
Oh, no worries. Mr. Reed, we're a little early, but are you ready?
Sure.
If you could, just state your name and address, please.
This is Mike Lott.
Yes.
This is Mike Fumlin.
Yes.
I'm gonna speak up for the benefit of the people in the room, my name is Eugene Reed, 345 Stage Road, Nottingham. I made a query, the subject is impact fees and the expenditure of those fees, I sent up the board and Ellen, questions about the Marston well, and the financing of that through impact fees. Ellen did respond to me, but it was addressed to the board as well, and I received no input from the board. I've also supplied to Kelly, and she said she'd supply you a preview of what I had been discussing. I don't know if you got that preview of the law on impact fees, and I believe I sent the original query for a preview by the board. As you look for that, I'll go on. According to the lawyers at New Hampshire Municipal Association and the RSA, the Nottingham Ordinance, impact fees are only to be used for capital projects that are caused by created or occasioned by new development. And for those that don't know what impact fees are, new homes that are built are called new development, and they pay an impact fee that is held in their name, or the, the lot that paid the fees, and if they're not used within six years for the proper use, they're returned to the owner at the time of return. So I'd ask the board to supply what the Supreme Court is, Supreme Court of the United States is called the nexus, with a direct relationship between the capital project, in this case, the Marston well, and the new development, because that is what causes the project to occur, is the connection, and my position, and the position mostly of lawyers, is that in this case, new development did not cause this well to be, to be drilled. The two criteria in many lawyer The two criteria in many lawyerly reviews for spending impact fees are a direct relationship, called the nexus, and expenditure of the proportional amount that can be attributed to new development. So if new development had caused this well to be drilled, it would be, out of the funds that are held in those, the accounts, would be pulled to pay the proportional cost. I've asked for the proportional cost, and the response was accurate in that the municipality didn't pay anything for the Marston well, to the best of my knowledge. It was paid by ARPA funds and impact fees. So the proportion paid by the impact fee holders was 100% as compared to the municipal costs. The municipality, my information indicates, paid nothing. Can you tell me if that's accurate, please?
The ARPA funds are considered town funds, right? They're-
They're not. They're not municipal costs. How much did the municipality pay? Not my opinion. I'm not arguing with it. The lawyers have said so.
I'm learning up here, too. I was not here for this portion of it, but-
Okay.
I believe, do you have more for how the ARPA rolls in, like it is, it's been given to the state or to, from, given from the federal government to the state, from the state, given to the town. The town did allocate, it is for construction in the town.
It's for municipal purposes.
So it is an allotment of funds for the town to spend. It did not come out of the regular town budget, it came out of the ARPA funds, but it is still town funds.
Not my argument. Lawyers say you're wrong.
Based on ARPA fees or based on-
ARPA fees. It costs the municipality, it costs me, you, everybody that pays taxes. We didn't pay anything. That's a municipal cost. That's what we budget for, that's what we budget for and pay our taxes for. That becomes municipal cost.
But have they been asked since the arrival or law mana? ARPA-style funds have only been around post-COVID, so in the last two years or so. So, and I believe some of this stuff was from before then, where they were using different funds, correct?
I don't think that that's true. I would defer to the people that handled the money. I believe the only money that was dispensed other than impact fees was federal funding.
For the well.
It's not federal funding.
But would, I guess my question is that, you know, for the impact fees, the planning board in 2017 had included the Marston project as part of the rec portion of the impact fees that could be used. So you wouldn't broaden the definition of the capital project as the Marston recreational area, because it doesn't have to be one expense, it can be over a period of time.
That begs the argument, if you go that way, which I don't, but this is my opinion, the Marston project was not caused by, occasioned by new development that was planned separately. No one ever came and said, "New development is going to cause us to build Marston fields."
Well, if you read that rec report that's on the website-
I have read it.
Yeah. I mean, the whole reasoning for that project and that analysis was for future growth of the town. It was based upon future growth of the town. It was all projected growth.
It was.
Yeah.
But we haven't had, you cannot tie, the two things, you've got to tie the project to the people that own impact fees. The second thing is, it should only be proportional.
To the proportional part, you're saying federal funds, they're not federal funds, that they are given to the town, they are the town's funds, that they are in our pockets, it's our money.
To be used for one thing. They supplied it to do that, so it did not cost the town, us. That's the whole premise of impact fees. Rapid, quick development can cause capital infrastructure to be built. It happens. In this case, for that, they didn't cause it, nor did they cause the development of Marston. New growth didn't cause it.
So you're-
So I did respond, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go back and forth. I've given you an opinion, and you've, New Hampshire Municipal Association, I've got a personal response from Mr. Buckley. Ellen mentioned that she uses, and rightfully so, New Hampshire Municipal Association is an advocate for towns and cities. So I can't get answers, and I had suggested that the board refund the $6,700 to the impact fee holders. And I did not get a response for that. The law, I supplied that. It's a fee imposed to help, I'm going to go over it again, but Christine Fillmore, Mr. Buckley, and the nine justices in the Supreme Court, do have to have a nexus of the actual project under consideration, and the condition must be roughly proportional to that caused by the development of the impact fees. My sense is, what is the board's intention?
Well, I'm just going to say this just because, so take this as, I built a house two years ago, I paid the money into the impact fee. And you know what? In my opinion, I'm happy we used the money, because I think it's good for the town and what we did. Right or wrong, I'm happy to contribute to the town, I don't want the money back, I think the well there is a good thing for the town, for the fields, for the kids, for the future of the town, for a future reserve water source. And in my opinion, I'm happy that my fee went there. And that's just my, just throwing out my opinion, since I have a stake in the game being that some of that money is my money and my wife's money, I'm happy with what we used it for there. Right or wrong, just throwing out a statement that, what I feel is-
When you were referring to the NHMA, Mr. Buckley, when you were discussing our particular thing, how did you, did you say we used federal funds or what, did you say there were ARPA funds? I'm just-
I did not address the fund issue. I have not, I've not got, excuse me, I have not got lawyerly input on the ARPA funds.
Okay.
Yeah, I would be curious to see how New Hampshire Municipal opined on this, because normally they will take a very general question, not very specific. I mean, each town's adoption of impact fees would be tailored around the need of the community and however the planning board established those fees. So, I mean, I think that we would probably have to get a legal opinion based on our unique situation in Nottingham, that those recreation impact fees were established specifically for the use of the Marston Recreation Complex and the conceptual design that was, what was that, 2000, how long ago, 10 years ago anyways?
Yeah.
17, I think was the last report that was generated, which is now outdated, by the way, along with the master plan.
Yeah, so I-
They're both outdated.
I really think that if there, if there is question, then we're probably going to have to elevate it to specific questions for a legal review, rather than, you know, a broad interpretation of what Supreme Court rulings were and somebody's perception of what the RSA states.
And we're not ignoring you when we get the, we get the emails, but we have to wait to now to respond to you. Ellen responds generally to the board, we've gotten, and she'll try to make the general correspondence, but if we start onesie-twosying or replying to you, then it could potentially be reviewed as a meeting being held with you or trying to provide answers.
You are right.
Huh?
You are right.
Okay.
You are correct.
So I didn't want you to think we're ignoring you. We've received the information, but you said I did not receive, heard anything from the board.
I did say that.
Okay. I didn't want to make it seem like we're ignoring you, it's-
But you brought a good point.
Okay.
You're correct.
Thank you. And I'm not arguing with on this, this is my interpretation of how the ARPA funds are to be used. They were, they were, the big ARPA funds, right, the federal government spent the money, they gave it to the states, the states took everything, they allocated it up for all the towns. So Nottingham, Nottingham has their funds to be used, so I'm definitely, we'll want to dig into this further, but I think we've thought-
I have an outstanding 91A request in for the ARPA application, because I want to see how it was detailed, and a couple other things related to ARPA, which Ellen's working on, I believe.
Lot of 91A requests.
It's the only way I can find out what's going on, other than, if I run for select nominee, do you know what's going on?
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay.
Also, what's the commitment on the board then, Mr. Reed? Alan, you said you have state legal advice?
Is that what you would like me to do?
Yeah.
Yes, I will.
Could you copy on me, the mic?
Anybody that's sought legal advice, as you, one of you pointed out, it really depends on how the question is asked to what you get for an answer. So to be non-vague is not good, to be specific is good, so I'd appreciate that. Can I get copied? I know that 91A, I'm not, I cannot be, I cannot force you to produce correspondence between attorney and client. Would you extend the courtesy of copying me on the question that goes to the attorney?
Absolutely. And I will more than likely forward your exact correspondence, so she understands.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to general business, budget review, highway recycling, social services.
I sat down with Steve Rollins this afternoon. As I announced earlier, his first day was last Monday, he's been acclimating and transitioning and getting to know how the highway department's functioning, so we didn't really get a lot of time to discuss budget items until today. My initial plan was to move forward into the budget process with at least a level-funded budget for the general maintenance items for both the highway department and the recycling center, but I would like to give him the opportunity to look it over. So he went home with it tonight for homework, and he's going to review it this week. Obviously, we know that we had to move a bulk of the road maintenance into a Warren article this past year, and we'll probably have to do the same thing to meet the tax cap, but I would like him to have the opportunity to review it. So I would like to try to finalize that with him this week, and then send off a proposed budget for those to both the highway and the recycling center. And other than that, the social services, I had to reach out to a couple of agencies because we had not received requests. The only one that I'm waiting on as of this date is, let me just find it, I believe it's Lamprey Healthcare. And I have since learned that Richie McFarland has joined forces with Waypoint, so that will be one of the social services that we were contributing $2,700 to. You'll see an increase in Waypoint, but Richie McFarland will be no request moving forward. So I will need a couple more days, and I'd like to circulate off the first draft of the official budget to you by the end of this week.
When are we scheduled to sit down, actually, start, I don't want to say cutting, but that's basically what we're going to end up doing. So when is our official date so that people at home can know if they want to come and listen to us?
Your next meeting is scheduled for the 20th. The department heads are scheduled to go before the budget committee on the 16th of this month. So I would like to plan the bulk of that meeting to be just that. At that point, we should be closer to the tax rate setting. Right now, we're waiting for the school district to get their information in, but we'll be doing revenue review at that point, and we can fine-tune it based on preliminary figures that'll be used for the tax rate setting. So I think we can probably get a pretty good handle on it the 20th, and then you have a special meeting scheduled again for the 27th, at which point, you know, that should be the-
Well, the 27th, yeah, is where we actually sit down and we discuss what we're cutting as the group.
Yes.
That's the meeting where I think some people would probably want to see and understand what we're doing, and listen to what we're doing, so it'd be good to set, they have the record that when they come here to see what we are doing and the decisions that we are making in order to reach the tax rate that, the 4%.
That's a special meeting, it's not a regular meeting, right?
That's correct, so that will be a special meeting just for that purpose.
Again, that date is-
October 27.
November 27.
November, I'm sorry, November 27.
Thank you very much. And then, has he had a chance, part of the big thing is to properly set, you know, usually the Warren article says, does a town to fix this road, this road, this road, has he had a chance to make it around it all to-
He's very familiar with our roads, just from best practice history, but we do have a very, we have a road management plan somewhat in place, and we're three to four years behind schedule. Obviously, COVID delayed things, and then financing has been another difficult decision. So it's a matter of picking up the pieces where we really need to prioritize versus what needs to be paved and-
I might have to look at-
Some additional attention.
Finding, instead of like paving an entire road if 70% of it's good, fixing the bad spots for a year or two to get everything kind of caught up and moved through, instead of-
Have the shoulders on Deerfield Road been taken care of yet?
No, they were supposed to come back out last Monday, and it rained, a week ago Monday, it rained, so they weren't able to. I'm not sure if they made their way out.
Or partially repaired.
They had only done about a 300-foot section, they do have to come back and do that.
Okay. I saw the flooder streets all set, but it's just that there's portions of Deerfield that need it, you know, the shoulder work there. Okay. Any more on that?
When you reached out to the social services, ones that you had blanked on there, did they all respond back that they want the money?
Yes.
Of course.
There was a lot of them that had sent requests to Chris Durndale's old email address, so they were archived away.
So that's going to have to be added into the ones that we were talking about already.
Correct.
Good.
But I think there's only one, maybe two, that increased, and it was minimal.
You have comments, questions? No? Okay. Town building lease agreement. Everybody had an opportunity to review it?
Thank you.
Did we put this out?
I should probably start with what it is and how we got here.
Okay. So this building lease agreement is being proposed for the old fire station. All right. There's three bays over there. A resident who has a business is looking to have use of one bay and is willing to lease a bay from the town. Now, if you go back and if you were following with the facilities committees' report in regards to the, some of the statuses that these buildings are in, the old fire department being one of them, not in best of shape, however, it still houses, you know, equipment and so on. This is, you know, I don't want to speak for everybody on the board, but I felt that this was a good, you know, a deal to move forward with whatever money that is made off of that particular bay, or even if we rent another bay, goes right back into that building for maintenance and repairs and so on and so on. Essentially, it will not cost the town money if we're repurposing that money that's being made off of it. I view it as a win-win situation for the town and the person who wishes to lease it. And I know that there are some other folks out there that are also interested in leasing the other bay. So, you know, at a time where we're inundated with a bunch of information in regards to how, what kind of condition our building's in, I think that this is a good way to get that building back to where it needs to be as far as being in a good place as far as a building that's, you can continue to use. Yeah, it's going to need some work, but if, you know, we're renting out those bays, and they don't seem to care what it is, the roof is still solid, the door is still open, little things here and there that need to be done to it, but, you know, whatever that's being made off that building will go right back into it. That's the purpose of the lease agreement.
Are the bays separated?
They will not be- They will not be separated. But that'd be something we could explore down the road. But as of right now, they will not be separated.
No paying insurance on our property, right?
Hold up, get to these questions. As I read through the lease agreement here, you know, they know that we're not doing nothing to this building. They're renting it basically as is, as space. Basically, they're just renting a covered and that's it.
Correct. And it's a short-term lease.
It's a seven-month lease, yeah. I understand that that's, it's going to be covered from the winter.
It says seven, but it's six.
Yeah, it's six. Number seven, it's probably six.
That's why I was reading this.
Well, it says six and then in parentheses, seven.
Yeah.
So I'm a surprise.
You know, so I mean, there's no heat, they know upfront clear that they're getting what they're getting.
What are they going to be storing in there?
I believe it is just the tanks. They clean them out, so it's just the tanks that they use to service the porta-potties.
Okay. I thought the truck.
And the truck. I think it's two trucks back to back with the tanks on them.
Yeah. That's whatever solution they use to just try to keep them from being frozen.
And they're covering their own insurance policy.
Correct. They would have to have their own insurance.
Yep.
We would have to be listed as additional insured.
And.
And you can define.
Contrary to what you just said, the money that's bringing in that we get from this, I mean, before we satisfy and say, that's where we're going to spend it on that building, there might be something else we can use that money for that might be more prudent.
Yeah, and we can't say that's what we're going to.
Than that building. Just.
I like to say, you know, to ensure that the building is still standing in a year from now, you know, that things will be addressed.
Well, if it's not standing, we're always going to rent it. So, but. I just wanted to make that clear, that money hasn't been quite said that it's going to automatically go back.
I'm just saying what I like to see it go for, but it's obviously a decision of the board. You know, that's why I said I wasn't speaking for the board.
Just reiterating.
People like to interpret things their own ways.
Oh, I know.
They potentially want a longer-term.
Correct.
Lease.
They would entertain a longer agreement if you were to offer one. I started this initially for the six months with the option to renew for a year if you would like. That's.
Well, since we're not in the rental business, let's first see how it works.
So I mean, you can leave it as is or you can just do a short-term six-month rental and.
They're not going anywhere. So I'm sure we can start with the six-month and, you know, to do our due justice just to make sure it works out for the town and for them so that we're not locked into something that if it doesn't work out for some reason.
It allows us to.
Yeah, there's an escape clause.
Reevaluate this and, I mean, if somebody wants to come in and throw more.
Which bay? Do you think of the one on the left?
I think it is the furthest one to the left, if I remember correctly.
Do we also, we also plow in front of that?
One closer to the door, I thought she wanted because all the tires and stuff are on the far left.
Yes.
So she's looking at the first one by the door. The small door.
Entry door.
I'm sorry.
And we are plowing in front of that anyways, aren't we?
Correct.
Do we have to move anything? What? Do we have to move it? Anything to the side? Because there is stuff, there's nothing out there.
There's nothing and right now there's a plow, but that'll be removed anyway now.
And how much will we use of it?
We don't.
It's storage for highway, there's sandbags, construction.
Rec vehicle goes in it, the van?
Yes, the rec vehicle goes in there in the winter. And I think there was.
Police will sometimes put their new cruiser in there if it's not ready outfitted. You know, other than that.
Yeah, they used to keep, did they keep the four-wheeler in there?
No, they keep it in there at Sallyport.
Can you take a comment on this? Before you vote?
Why not? That's my figure.
Hmm?
Yes, why not?
Go ahead, G. Three minutes.
Won't take me thirty seconds to count it. As a former landlord, think liability. That station, if my memory serves me correct, had mold. I would also advise the insurance company that the use of the building has changed liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
No. Make a motion to approve the lease for six months, as written. Convene again in May.
I'm sorry, what was that, Tim?
It said, and then we just convene again in April, May and see how it's going and.
Okay. Motion made by Tim D'Arrio, second made by Steve Welch. Roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mesheram.
Unanimous. Action item reviews are next, meaning you did mention budget. Any others?
One thing that we had brought up a few months ago was looking at purchasing a trailer for the aluminum cans for the recycling center. I think we need to revisit that before winter hits.
Yes.
Because if that trailer hits a frost heave, I have a feeling it's going to fall to six pieces.
Absolutely right.
Well, when do you want to talk about that since it's an accessory? Is that coming up on next meeting's agenda?
Is there anything left over in the highway fund that you think that could cover that? End of year funding?
Can that be used, highway fund can be used? No.
No? What about their budget?
That other funds for, has to be for, the other fund that I think you were referring to has to be for like road, road maintenance. I guess we could say we're trying to destroy the road by dragging the trailer down it, but.
Let me look at the recycling center.
I think that's a little too vague.
It didn't look like.
We are using it now, right, to transport.
Have you seen it?
No, I have not.
Oh. Things shouldn't be on the road.
I mean, we had talked about it a few months ago and we're trying to kind of piece between that, the baler and everything else that need.
Yeah.
And I think the baler can still maybe hold off until next year potentially, but that is a safety concern, I feel.
I don't know how it's, they would be moved.
Can't be repaired?
That's way beyond repair. Way beyond. I encourage you to go up and take a look at it.
Okay.
I can possibly make it work in the recycling center's budget. We might, we might have to get creative and split it between there and the highway.
Okay. Let's, let's see what you come up with.
What is the overall? I know we had, I don't have it in front of me, so that's why I'm asking the question.
We didn't have an actual cost. We would have to get an actual, well, we just quoted a ballpark.
I think it was six thousand dollars is what the thought was.
It was all depending on if that was a flat trailer, but then the flat trail was maybe going to have to have.
Higher sides.
Sides basically built into the thing that we have now. The thing that we have now could potentially, I mean, I've seen trailers in much worse shape be used before, like maybe just an axle swap and put it through a coat of paint like a, whatever. I'm up to the recycling center almost every weekend. I mean, I've used that thing for a while. So, I mean, visually does not look very appealing. I have not checked the underneath carriage, like everything that's with it. But I think we are putting a lot more miles on it now than we had before. Because before we were able to crush the cans as soon as more of a dense load and it would go every like third week or something like that. Now it's every Monday it has to go out because they're, they're not being compacted anymore. So it's full by Monday. So I don't know if it can be gussied up, if it's worth it. But it may be a shorter term, three-year fix to get us down the road. Or if it would have to be completely new, but we don't have an actual quote to vote on yet and we don't know what we have to spend.
If we could, if we could get a general idea of what it would cost, I'm happy to apply to New Hampshire the Beautiful and see if we can get some great funding to help towards the purchases. Wow.
That might be the way to go.
Dimensions are, is it a five by eight? Is it a six by ten? Is it what the dimensions are?
Yeah.
How high it needs to be, what it needs to contain? We need to, I mean, not to make a pain, you know, out of this project, but, you know, you're going to go for a quote. This is not something that you go to the local trailer company and say, hey, I'll take that. That'll work for my, you know, this, this has to be customized for our special need and use. So those things are all need to be predetermined before we send it out to a company that's going to make this trailer.
Yep.
So the size that's there now is if we are not going to get either a compactor or a baler again, we would maybe, if we're going to be doing this, get a slightly longer one, not necessarily wider or taller, because the height now is accessible by humans to get to the side, even including young children to like dump stuff in. So we can potentially make it slightly longer to either increase the capacity or limit how many trips we're making.
We've got to do a little bit of research.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to put it off. I mean, we talked about it and I think it needs to be done sooner than later.
So since you're, you're going to take the footnote or get into those dimensions to get into stuff from Wayne this week so that we can have it for discussion?
Yep.
Well, again, I mean, once you get it done, we've got to just.
Yeah, I'll work on it.
Some more research on it, you know?
I'll work on it this week.
Snap a couple of photos.
I'll go over tonight. And the other piece with the recycling center too is, I think I mentioned it to you, is that, well, I know you've all seen it, is that it's eroding the.
Yeah.
Is if, now that we've got more highway department personnel, if they can get more Jersey batteries over there?
Brian stopped over this afternoon. He said that he's going to be bringing those over there at a snowplow operator training. The entire highway department is in the morning tomorrow, but I believe he said he was going to try to get to that on Wednesday. So hopefully those will be in place before they reopen on Thursday. And just to kind of piggyback off of the recycling center, Veterans Day, of course, is an observed holiday. The town office observes it on Friday. The recycling center, where they are open on Saturday, could technically observe it, but the staff over there has opted to work to not change the flow of the schedule. So they will be working for Veterans Day on the holiday.
Believe Art is a veteran?
I believe he is.
Not sure.
They have been given the option to take a floating holiday or.
So they will be compensated for the day?
Correct.
They won't be?
They will. They will be compensated for working for the holiday, correct.
It's very nice that they.
Yeah.
They do that with the minimum staff that we have there to. Positive note.
Should we talk about the bags now or later?
I reserve that conversation because I believe Wayne wants to be present. So that's reserved for the meeting on the twentieth.
Okay. Anything else for the action item review? Nope. Do we have a non-public today?
We do not.
You do not? Okay. So this is where I'll open it up to public comment. If somebody has anything in the audience that they'd like to say and come up, please, please do so. Speak loudly in the mic. Would you name an address and?
So I think I was supposed to be on the agenda for the sixth to talk about the food pantry.
Okay, you're welcome to.
That's okay. If I could, just for a few. So I just wanted to, because we have some new board members, just to share about the food pantry and just a little bit of the history of it. So the food pantry, we're actually our own 501(c)(3). Charlie Brown, at the time, we had a relationship to so that we were able to have the food pantry be brought into the town offices here. So I just, a little bit of what I would like to see when you get to budget is looking at your welfare line because our welfare line is quite small. And, and that's hugely in regards to Sue Benoit and the work that she does and, and the resources that she has. So it's not always going to be that way and I'm really concerned about that line because it was cut a few years ago, I think in half. So between her, between Sue and myself and the relationship that we have, the food pantry has really been using a lot of the funds that we have to offset what would be coming out of that line. So I just kind of want to have that out there for you when you get to that point of looking at, or the budget committee, looking at that welfare line. Like, oh, it's the same or it's not going anywhere. Money's not being used out of it. It really would be if Sue didn't have the resources that she has to get people in different organizations with funding coming from those organizations or from the food pantry.
So Shelley, is that, is that the welfare coordinator, the seventeen hundred dollars a year?
It's that entire line item. It's the three thousand dollars total annual for, you know, mortgage and rental assistance, utilities, fuel, food.
Yep. But her position specifically you're talking about?
I'm talking about that whole, that whole, the whole thing.
I mean, right now it looks good because we don't expend, but it's because we're utilizing the resources that are available through the food pantry and from just that, there's a, there's a variety of resources out there, but you have to have the knowledge to point people in the direction of how to get them. So potentially if anybody comes in here and they have a disconnect notice, Sue does a great job at trying to utilize those programs, but ultimately it is on the, on the town to be able to provide that to the needy as they need.
And there's been a few times where she's come to us and she has asked, all right, the town will pay for half of this utility bill. Can the food pantry help with the other? And we have. We have people that come and already this year I've filled two oil tanks for people because they're waiting on their fuel assistance and so they don't have the funds right now. So we've done that. We're doing, helping out with car registration. So we've helped two single moms.
And this is out of the food pantry?
This is out of the food pantry.
So which is, which is primarily all donations, right?
Yep.
Is how you get all your funds and stuff like this?
All donations from our town because they know that it stays in town.
Just kind of reiterate.
They just know that it stays in town.
Right.
So, yeah.
Do you know if other towns set up reserve accounts for general assistance?
No. I mean, there's other towns that utilize food pantries and other community services that they have available to them. There's a lot of local churches that have funds available. So I, I mean, it just depends on where you can get the resource.
And I mean, our program has expanded so much. It was in the beginning just strictly food and now it's really has expanded, which has been great because it's offsetting that. But I just want you to know and I want the budget committee to understand that that would be a lot more. Our numbers have gone up. We've gone from like twenty families, we're now over thirty families right now.
How long is that?
That we're serving.
Is that the last year? Is that the last ten years? Is that?
No, probably in the last six months. Just this week I have two new people that I'm going to be servicing.
Is all the money that's donated spent every year that's given to the food pantry?
No, we have an account.
Okay. I just never seen it, so I have no idea. I'm just asking in general.
Yep.
Do folks usually start with you or start with Community Action, get referred to you?
They, well, it depends. If they don't know that there's a food pantry here, they usually go to Community Action and then they refer them back to their town for food.
Community action will only cover probably electric and fuel.
Yeah.
And it's usually good till September thirty, I think they'll start?
The application process, some people.
But they'll back pay.
They will. Some, it depends. But we have people, like, we have people that come in and a lot of it's elderly. We have a lot more elderly now. And it has a lot to do with the food that we put out here on Thursdays. We have a lot, it's just, it really has helped to build a relationship when I come out here to talk to some of the people and then they're comfortable to come into the pantry. A lot of the elderly people are very hard to, they don't want to have to get to that point, but they are. So we, I mean, right now we have twenty-seven elderly families that we're servicing.
And you're saying that you think these numbers need to go up?
I'm saying I wouldn't get rid of it. I mean, it went, they got cut in half a few years ago and I was not too happy because it got cut in half.
And regardless of where the budget is, we, I mean, if the assistance needs to be granted, we need to find the funding.
You're going to have to find it in another line. Right. But I'm just saying right now, I think the town's doing well because the food pantry can offset some of that.
Due to the fact that you're getting enough donations?
Yeah.
If those start to deplete, then you're going to be in.
Oh, we're parade over in that place. We'll be good. But, yeah. If it depletes and things are getting more and more expensive, it's not. And the thing of. not... And the thing of it is, is some of these elderly people, they come in, they can't qualify for fuel assistance, because they have money, they have my, like, a, not, I want to say a huge amount, but they have money in an account, and that gets looked at. That money in their account, they don't understand, is taken out twice a year just to pay their taxes. But they get penalized for it. So when it comes down to it, I'm not, you know, there are some people, they, you know, that I've talked to, the elderly, and they're out there, and their heat's down to, like, 50. I'm like, turn the heat up, we will get you oil.
A lot of them are too proud to take money.
They are. But there are more coming in, and I'm so thankful that more are coming in now.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
That we care.
Yeah, that we can do that for them. Yep. So...
Because you don't ask to see their bank account.
No, I don't ask for anything. I just ask that they live in town.
Need help.
I just ask that they live in town.
You need help.
Yep. So we don't do any of that. And if they need it more, if they need more than once a month, we try to do it, we do it the third week, so that it gets them through that last week of food stamps and social security checks.
Is there a way that if people want to, can they stop by on Thursday if somebody wanted to drop a check off for you to donate to the food pantry?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a certain time of day or some... There's a little plug for anybody out there who wants to donate any cash or money to help the food pantry on Thursdays?
Then go to the concert.
Concert on Sunday.
Or go to the concert.
And do checks get made out to the food, to the town or to the food pantry?
No, to the Nottingham Food Pantry.
Okay, yeah. You have Benmo?
Huh?
You have Benmo.
But, yeah, so that was my concern when it comes to budget season, just because it's just all around expensive.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Love doing it, so that was just my concern. I'll be back for more, but...
Thank you.
You're Shelley.
That's the main concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Anybody else have comments?
Quick question. John?
Help me understand. You mentioned that there's a 4% limit on the tax rate. Is it... I don't know the answer. Is it 4% on the budget or 4% on the tax rate?
It's 4% on the appropriation, the amount to be raised by taxation.
So what the final line item was from last year, the next budget, coming from the budget committee, cannot be greater than 4% above.
So it's the budget, not the tax rate?
But that's how they determine the tax.
Yeah. That determine, whatever our budget turns out is...
Yeah, I'm not calling you on it. I needed, I wanted to know.
No, 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 but that's again, you know how the, you know how the system works, so...
I think there's a...
There's a lot more to it, to the tax rate than there is to the budget.
Well, exactly. Right.
I think there's a line item on here that says what the target, 4% max would be.
Yeah, it's like 5 million.
5 million and 44,000.
That was a Warren article, wasn't it?
Correct. The tax cap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, yeah.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
A motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Tim D'Abrio. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim D'Abrio.
Aye, Mr. Loom.
Bye, Nottingham.